Board of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. If you would join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drick. Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
And Commissioner Griffith is absent, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Item five is correspondence tonight. We have correspondence from the Crawford County Board of Commissioners. I'm looking or in support of four-year terms for county commissioners, looking for a resolution to place on file, to receive and place on file.
So move Gross.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Plank. Roll call. Actually, we don't need a roll call. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item number six is the call to the public. Any member of the public wishing to address the Board of Commissioners this evening, please indicate so. If you're in the room, just raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, use the Zoom raise your hand feature. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Alls we ask is that you provide your name and address. And then this is a reminder, the, this is your opportunity to present information to the board. It's not intended to be a two-way conversation. So we'll start out with the meeting room here. Does anybody want to address the board? I see one person, Mr. Laurie, Luria?
Luria. Luria.
Got to get my timer first. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Dan Luria. I live at 6210 Cowell Road, Hamburg Township. Commissioner Gross is my representative. The county's about to be able to access $37 million from the American Recovery Plan that has to be spent by the end of 2024. It's going to come in two tranches. Cities and townships in the county are going to get an additional $19 million. Use of this for improved broadband service is explicitly mentioned in the authorizing language, and most of this money cannot be spent on roads and bridges. As far as the public knows, at least, the county has no plans for how to spend this windfall. And I do worry because in the past, windfall revenues have often been wasted on unnecessary buildings that do nothing to improve the county's future economic performance. And as an economist, that's my main interest. I'd like to see a higher-performing economy in this county, providing more well-paid jobs and allowing more residents to live in the county and not have to commute east, west, or south in search of those jobs. Better broadband, I won't bother to cite the studies, but everybody agrees it would mean higher property values. And that obviously has positive implications for county and township and city revenues. The board doesn't know, I'm guessing, and I certainly don't know, the best way to bring our broadband up to snuff. I'm partly here today, not on Zoom, because even though I live in Hamburg Township in a pretty built-up area, unless I'm in a particular room, I constantly am cutting in and out on Zoom and on a number of other apps that are supposed to solve that problem. So there's multiple approaches that range from fiber optics to 5G towers to mesh networks. And Elon Musk has something called Starlink, which is low-orbit satellite. So I don't know which approach is best. I'm not sure there has to be just one approach. I do know, though, that if every township decides to do it their way, we're going to have a crazy mishmash that isn't going to make any sense, and it'll be a huge waste of resources. So what I recommend is that you set up a technology committee to evaluate competing approaches. This is assuming that you in fact want to respond to the issue in the county and maybe charge that committee with coming back to the board within, say, 90 or 120 days with recommendations. And again, I think those, the committee's findings are going to have a lot of interest to township government as well. And I would, on a ending note, say that if and when the board decides to move forward, I think you probably got to look at whether or not, Commissioner Zajac, you would need to recuse yourself because of your employer's telecommunications and technology committee representing so many cable companies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the room tonight would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll switch over to Cindy Katnick to let us know if anybody in the Zoom world would like to address the board.
Livingston Dems?
Hi, thank you. My name is Judy Dobinmeier, and I live at 4490 Lakeshore Court, Brighton, in Genoa Township. Of course, one of the things the pandemic has taught us is that reliable, fast internet is crucial for life in the 21st century as people try to work from home, learn from home, shop from home, get medical care from home, run a business or farm from home, apply for a job from home, and even more. But too many of our county residents have struggled with slow internet or spotty service that held our children, our businesses, and our workers back. We now have a once-in-a-generation chance to tackle this problem with the $37.2 million in COVID relief funds that will be coming to us over the next few years. Livingston Democrats are encouraging you to spend all of this money on addressing our internet issues. We would like to see a top-notch committee appointed to sort out what the best approach is for improving internet access, whether that's fiber optics, low-orbit satellite, a combination of fire and fiber and wireless, or something else. A Blue Ribbon Committee could also sort out the governance issues for a system like this. Should it be a public-private partnership, something owned by the county but leased to private enterprise, or something else? Could also investigate funding sources in addition to COVID funds from the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Federal Communications Commission, as well as the governor's new high-speed internet office. It should also address the affordability issue and explore whether subsidies might be necessary to bring internet access to all. Some people are going to question whether they should care whether somebody else in the county has internet access. Well, first of all, we're a community, and community members look out for each other, not just for themselves. And second, the internet is like having the only telephone in town. If you have the only phone in town, it's not worth much. But if somebody else gets a phone, it's worth a little more to have two. But if 100 people get a phone, it's worth exponentially more. The internet is the same way. The internet with everybody having access means more customers, more students, more opportunity to grow. Houses with strong internet connections are worth more than those without them. Our tax base will increase. More people will want to live here if they know they can get decent internet service at a reasonable price. We urge you to set up a panel to make better broadband a reality for all of Livingston County, and please don't let this opportunity pass us by. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobinmeier. Cindy, next.
Brian Johnkier.
Yes, Brian Johnkier, 350 West Caledonia, Howell, Michigan. Just a couple of comments. One, on the American Rescue Recovery Act funds, I would just urge you not to forget watered sewer. There's also other things such as dams where we have issues with health, welfare, and safety of citizens. And certainly, I think we should be looking at some of that infrastructure as well. My main comment is directed towards the committee appointing procedure. And I know somebody's gone to an awful lot of work to develop some rules or some guidelines in terms of how the process is undertaken. And my only ask is that you make them simple enough so that a dream commissioner can understand them. I think there's some simplification. So I'm sorry, I'm the low one on the total poll, but if you can, if I could understand, I think most everybody else could. I think also, I would, I would ask that you put in there more of your intent in terms of what you want on a board. I know in our situation with the DPW, we have at least one person that's coming up on 50 years of service. And I've seen many a meeting running seven and eight hours straight without breaks. So these people are completely committed to representing Livingston County with virtually, you know, no compensation for doing so and have been doing that for many, many years. These people are extremely important. And I know one thing we look at as a DPW board is the variation or the diversity of our experiences, our backgrounds. And that is critically important to us. If we had a board of all engineers or we had a board of all attorneys, you can imagine we would probably be in deep trouble. So that diversity, I think, I would ask that any type of process or procedure list indicate that whatever board or committee is in need of an appointment, that they provide the Board of Commissioners with a listing of some of the important experiences or educational backgrounds or whatever that might be important to them. So something we keep in mind when we're, you know, we're low on a, maybe we don't have anybody with legal experience or a contractor would be helpful to us. So always keep that in mind when we're appointing new individuals. So again, you know, thanks for your effort in putting those together. I think a little bit more work needs to be done, but I appreciate the effort and would be happy to help in any way I could. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Nancy Durant.
Hi, I'm Nancy Durant. I live at 4616 Spring Mountain Drive. I want to reiterate what two other people have talked about in terms of the use of the American Rescue Act plan money. I speak on behalf of myself, my husband, and my son. We were people who, were three of us who were working at home. I was a contact tracer, working for the Michigan Department of Public Health. My husband works for University of Michigan Hospitals, and my son was working online. I can say that our internet lacked significantly this year, and we were not the only ones. We pay a significant amount of money for our internet, and it is lacking. And we are able to pay for that. We have elderly people that I've talked about in our neighborhood. We need to have reliable internet that is reasonably priced. This is a fund that's greatly needed to help with the infrastructure, and this is a great opportunity to use those funds. I can't imagine what it would be like if you were having three kids, two people at home that were trying to work at home. Five people on the internet this year would have been just a tremendously impossible situation. Our internet went down repeatedly, that I would lose contact. So this is a great opportunity to use those funds. My husband works in IT. I'm not going to volunteer his services for him, but there are people in the county that are great people that could serve on a committee. And I think that this idea of getting experts together, looking at the use of funds, looking at what the schools need, what establishments need, and what we can do to bring people into the county, because people look at what we have when they look at homes and say, geez, the services here just don't match up to what we have in Oakland County or Wasna County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durant.
Marie Jopic.
Hello, my name's Marie Jopic. I live at 6829 Chambers Road in Pickney. And like the other people have said, I live actually not too far from Dan Laurie. And in Livingston County, it literally can be down by a block. If you live in a big subdivision or you live in the city, like downtown Brighton or Howell, you have excellent internet. But those of us that live in the more rural areas tend to have to rely on satellite. And people probably don't realize with satellite, you actually have to buy tokens. So like the previous person was telling, if I'm a family and I have kids on, I have to keep paying. You can think of it as your data plan on the cell phone. You have to keep buying it. So when you have satellite internet, your bill will use it. Also, I do work in IT, and because COVID let people work remote, I now can work at companies across the United States. So if we have high-speed internet, people can actually live in Livingston County where before, like my friends, they all moved out of Livingston County because they worked in Detroit or they worked at some of the major companies because you just couldn't do it from home. But now I can apply for jobs even overseas if my internet was good. And I actually turned some down because my internet is too spotty. So by creating a great infrastructure here, you would increase people moving out. People could work anywhere, so it would reduce the volume of traffic on the roads, and it would provide a great way for kids to be able to study and a family have a steady bill, not an internet bill that goes up and down based on homework and usage. I don't know. I think a committee would be great if you were looking for volunteers that work in the IT networking world. I would be happy to be on that committee, but please really consider a broadband. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jopic.
Mars Hertzard. You should be able.
Your message came across my screen and covered up where I was. So, and this will give you some knowledge about the fact that I really hope that you will have a committee and that we get better internet so that when I call Comcast, I'm not on the line.
Ms. Hertzard, if you could provide your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2641 Sun Terrace Drive, Heartland, Michigan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want, I'm just calling and I'm reiterating what everybody else has said, that I do think for the schoolchildren and everything in Livingston County, having broadband reach to the outer edges and not just the cities is very important. I live alone, and I'm only one person, and I have body cable. And when I called them about the television, that the people are cracking up, they had me push the button or whatever I had to do. Well, then they wanted me to undo something on the back of the television. Bottom line, I'm tired of those poor people on my television set being not clear. And I want you to have a good evening. I'm probably not going to spend 10 hours on this call. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hertzard.
Lori Cohen.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
I'm Lori Cohen. I live in Unidilla Township, and I'm trustee. Collectively, our board, Democrat and Republicans, have all agreed to put our $341,000 we're receiving from the American Rescue Plan towards broadband. There are too many households with absolutely no access, as everyone has stated, or shoddy access like our home. And in the world today, internet service is so crucial, especially for our children's education. My hope is that our county commission, you collectively, will agree to put the $37.2 million towards the same, hoping to find the best course of action that will provide internet service to each and every deserving resident of Livingston County. I also just wanted to add that I'm unclear about who and why informed you that Doug Helserman could not serve on both committees of the AAA1B and OLHSA due to a conflict, and I hope that will be addressed later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Mullison.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Happy Flag Day, everybody. I live at 2055 South Gregory Road in Fowlerville, which is Iasco Township, where my family was among the first settlers. I'm here tonight to urge you to use the allocation of $37 million in COVID relief funding for Livingston County to provide rural citizens with access to affordable broadband internet services. The pandemic laid bare the many reasons why broadband is a critical need as important as phone services. Where I live, we can't bundle our phone service with non-existent internet cable service, so my household pays almost $300 a month for two cell phones and satellite internet. The internet has a cap data limit, is usually slow, and completely out of service if it rains or snows hard. Conservative estimates I have seen indicate you lose 7% of your home value if you don't have broadband internet service. On the sale of a $260,000 home, that is a hit of over $18,000. At the last Iasco Township Board meeting, Commissioner Helserman shared the broadband plan prepared by your very able planning department. They proposed laying a utility trunk line in the rural areas where there is no fiber infrastructure. The estimated cost is $12 million. Well, that proposal was not selected for funding. It provides good evidence that the amount of $37 million we do have over the next two years will move us very far forward with broadband. The planning department also brought in an expert who identified a good number of other federal funding sources that the county can leverage to complete the job. He also made clear that the county should coordinate this effort to avoid wasteful duplication. The fall before the pandemic struck, Iasco Township hosted a public meeting on broadband. At least 60 people attended and all want affordable broadband service. We can be sure that there are now many more people anxious for the service. The supervisor of Unidilla Township, Linda Walker, could not be here tonight. She asked me to convey this message to you, and I quote, "Broadband is the top priority for Unidilla Township. We are in agreement that the funds should be dedicated to broadband." I need not tell you that citizens expect good services for their tax dollars. Many are aware of this new opportunity from the federal government and that it can be used to provide us broadband. Many of us living in the rural areas of the county have gone too long without access to this very necessary modern system of communication. You don't need to study this to death, as much information and data already exists. There are proposals and resource people to help you find out in a few short months how you should and can act now.
Thank you.
Mike Sypat.
You're calling me?
Yes. Mike, you are on.
Okay. My name is Mike Miller. I live in Conway Township. That's 7575 Morley Road. Am I addressing the Commissioners?
Yes, you are.
Well, I would like to join in and ask their attention to the broadband issues that Conway Township tried to deal with two years ago, and we came very close to purchasing our own. But we failed, and it would have been very expensive. And if the county can get this additional monies and allocate it towards broadband, it would be wonderful. I have real estate agent friends that also agree that it impacts the value of your home, and it's not something that we should be going without doubt here. So I appreciate it, and I would appreciate it if they'd not be so small-minded on other issues like the Metro Parks issue, where the Commissioner Chairman wants to appoint his political mistress to a job she has no business dealing with. I think they should be ashamed of themselves for not appointing the gentleman that was not reappointing the gentleman that had that job. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Cindy Kalogaropoulos.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Kalogaropoulos. I live at 7888 Partridge Hill Drive, Brighton, Michigan, Hamburg Township. I would also like to encourage the formation of a committee to investigate improving the broadband and Wi-Fi situation in this county. As a Hamburg Township resident, I have access to one company from which to purchase my internet. Sometimes it's wonderful. Many times, I'm trying to communicate with people in a very frustrating manner as my screen freezes up and the internet goes down. I think this is an issue both in terms of education. As a retired teacher, I'm concerned. I volunteered to help students this past year who were trying to learn virtually. Many times, we were unable to communicate. My husband worked from home as part of his business and ran into many, many difficulties. And on a humane level, I have finally seen my children for the first time since Christmas 2019 in person this last weekend or so. Prior to that, the only communication I had with them was over the internet and FaceTiming them. We need those connections, and we need to have them consistently. So I would like to encourage the formation of a committee and the usage of the funding for a broadband system that works for our entire county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donnie Betts.
Hello, this is Donnie Bettis. I live at 3430 Pine Ridge Lane, Brighton, Michigan, in Genoa Township. I'm a former teacher and I'm a physician. And I think the COVID-19 pandemic has laid bare the need for broadband internet. Many patients were afraid to come to the office, and we were using telemedicine to see those people. But if people don't have good internet access, that path was denied to them for their very health. And I agree with Dan Laura and Cindy Karopoulos as far as using the money from the American Rescue Plan to provide broadband internet to everyone in our county. So everyone has a chance for a good education, and everyone has a chance to maintain their health. I think having broadband internet should be the same as having water or power. It should be something that all municipalities provide to their people. So whether we need to form a board to do that, whatever needs to be done, I would encourage our council to please do that and provide broadband internet to help provide education and healthcare for all the citizens of Genoa Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Carney.
Yes, Kathy Carney, 6294 Kenyon Drive, Brighton, Michigan, or Greenock Township. Bringing broadband access to people who don't currently have it is a difficult challenge. After all, if it were easy, it would have been done already. But this challenge is one that is worth undertaking because the stakes are increasingly high. While even a decade ago, broadband was still a luxury, today it's become a necessity, and the consequences of not closing the broadband gap will be at the expense of our rural communities for whom opportunities, both economic and otherwise, will continue to suffer. Now more than ever, it is essential for community leaders to step forward and address the challenge of broadband equality head on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nakagiri, I do not see any more hands raised.
Okay, we will therefore close the call to the public, but oh, sorry, there is. There is Mr. Williams here in the meeting room.
Steve Williams, 5118 Hinchy Road, Howell, Michigan, 4843. I am not here to talk about broadband specifically, although the letter that I just passed out does address what the Metro Parks have done to provide hotspots to the kids in Livingston County living in rural areas, particularly in the southwest and northwest corners of the county. But I'm here, of course, to talk about the Metro Parks. I will be happy to talk to you about internet any time. When I was a commissioner, that was one of my focus areas, and I could spend a couple hours telling you what we tried to do at that time and what we had done. I haven't seen anything from the board recently, though. Within the Metro Parks, we started this off, and I was assaulted from the very beginning by untruths, starting out with the claim that the Metro Parks were in financial distress, which they are not, and which the audit that was released last Thursday should put entirely to bed. I should never hear that again because it was false then, it's false now, and it's very well proven. There were other claims, like we're training children in DEI. That's absolutely not true. We're building playgrounds for children. The DEI aspect meant that those playgrounds are ADA-compatible, and so they're open to all children, not just the ones that are physically able. And thank you very much, Commissioner Reader, for being there for the grand opening. It's great to come and see things in person. They talked about critical race theory being part of DEI. That is not true at all whatsoever. It's not a racist program. I'm not a racist. I'm not a reverse racist. I would never support a racist program, and that is not what's being carried out here. And I would doubt that it's not being carried out at the companies that your various constituents work at who are having DEI programs. Go look up General Motors, Ford, Chrysler, any of those. Our program is not racist. I pushed back against any perception of that, any perception of goals or quotas. We had a specific additional legal review to make sure that it met all state and federal laws, and I've talked to you about that before. I'm the only one of the commissioners to vote against it. You know, I'm being attacked personally for three votes out of over 500 cast in five years, but yet nobody goes back and looks at the tally and talks to me or to the staff about the different times that I was the one that made sure there was some quality control on this DEI program. There's not just one vote against the program. There were other times, but I only have three minutes. And my second three-minute time period is to go to do a different topic. You know, I started to wonder, well, what about our program is so much different from the county's own social equity plan? I mean, you have a master plan that was voted on, enacted in 2018. You have 10 pages devoted to social equity in there. So what I've done is prepared an analysis for you because that can't be done in three minutes either, that shows you that so much of the county's social equity plan, which by default is endorsed by you as commissioners, you've all been on the board at least six months now.
Your three minutes is up.
And that's available for you later. And I'll be available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the first call to the public and just remind citizens that there's a second call to the public later in the agenda. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. One dated May 3rd, the other dated May 24th, the other dated June 9th. I'm looking for a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
So move Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Reader. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving these three sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion passes. Item number eight is tabled items from previous meetings. There are no tabled items, so we'll move on to item nine, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move Gross.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Zajak. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Zajak.
Just a question for the attorneys. As we get into these resolutions and the agenda with our numbers here this evening, what constitutes a passing vote that has authority for each of these resolutions?
So generally, Commissioner, can you hear me okay, everybody?
Yes.
Okay. You need a majority of those elected and serving for the final passage of a resolution.
So we need five, even though there's seven of us?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The only other point that I would like to make is I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to move the item. Scrolling here, bear with me. The Resolution 2021-06-092, Resolution Establishing Uniform Procedure for Nominations. I would like to move that to a discussion item and out of the resolutions for consideration.
So Commissioners, Zajak has a motion to change the Resolution 2021-06-019 to a discussion item. Is there support?
Support, Reader.
So we have a motion and support. Any discussion on changing Resolution 2021-06-019 to a discussion item? Hearing none. We'll have a vote on.
Yeah, I would move that we put on a motion to reconsider Steve Williams. I think our board rules allow anyone to.
There is a motion on the floor that needs a vote before we can move on to anything else.
Okay.
Any discussion on moving the 092 Resolution to a discussion item?
I have a. I do.
Commissioner Drick.
Thank you, Chair. Is it such a lengthy discussion we need that we can't just discuss it during the resolution? Is that what I'm hearing? Half hour?
Mr. Chair.
Kind of thing? Two of four? Oh. Now I understand the timeframe. I thought it'd be better to get something passed tonight. Two to four hours.
Mr. Chair, if I can provide some rationale?
Yes, Commissioners.
I think that we're making good progress. I perhaps as loud as anyone have been an advocate for a resolution that solidifies this process. I think that you've heard my comments before, colleagues, about dissatisfaction with how the process has played out in different applications. So I make this recommendation because I think we are continuing to make progress. I believe there's some input, such as some of the input made during public comment that should further be considered in other discussion with administration in terms of what the terms and the logistics will look like for Nathan and Natalie and those that are responsible for carrying out much of the work. I don't put this motion to amend forward for purposes of kicking the can by any stretch because I would have liked to see a resolution months ago. But I think we're very close and with our cadence of meetings, I believe that I think there's opportunity to get something that addresses the majority of all the issues the best in a very short period of time following this meeting.
Okay, if I can understand the motion.
Is there any other discussion on this? I just want to interject a point. I too am anxious to get a policy in place. I've been a proponent of doing that for a number of months, but I am willing to wait a little bit longer. I would ask that the, well, I will inform people that this will go on to our next meeting agenda, whether the changes that, you know, Commissioner Reader is contemplating are in place or not. But I do think it's worth waiting so we don't have to have a quick amendment. That's my comment. Anybody else? Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I personally feel that we've been kicking this down the road already, and I think if we were to vote on the resolution that we have before us, and if it should pass, going forward, we always have the opportunity to adjust as needed. And I just feel that the longer we wait to get something solidified, the more trouble we're going to have. So I think we should vote on this tonight.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Plank.
I feel that it's well-needed. However, I'm willing to wait till the next meeting to vote on it so that we have time to make adjustments to it, to make it as, you know, as good as we can make it, I suppose. My only concern, based on what Commissioner Gross just said, if we're voting on any appointments between now and then, that may be a concern. But if we're not, then I think that this can wait until the next meeting.
Any other discussion?
I make a point.
Commissioner Reader, and then I think Commissioner Helsman, you wanted to chime in?
Sure.
This is a very complicated process, and I'm now realizing it needs to be stated a little bit more simply than what it is now. It's kind of complicated the way it is. And it's like making legislation. You can't do it in a very short period of time. I served on the mental health board in the state when we put together statutes for mental health court. Took us over six months. And this is affecting over 200 people with appointments. I don't want to rush to judgment, as they say. I think that we have enough time to readjust, given the input that we've gotten, both from the public and other commissioners, to make the resolution much better than what it is. And I want to have a process, too, but I don't want to do it at a cost of further amendments and so forth that may change the entire way it's put together. I'd much rather do it now and present it to you and see whether or not you agree or if we need to do something further.
Thank you, Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Helsman.
I, first of all, want to understand Commissioner Zajak's motion. Is your motion to, is there a phrase that's used to put it forward? Or is it a simple motion just to make it in a discussion item?
It was a motion to make it a discussion item.
Okay, okay, okay. I think it could be handled either as a discussion item or maybe table the item. Y'all discuss it and then table it. Either way would be fine with me. And I, so I think the way that we're doing doesn't preclude a motion for this, but I think the first thing is some discussion. And maybe we're having the discussion now as far as that goes. So I favor this changed the, to the agenda.
Any further comments on changing this to a discussion item? Hearing none. All those in favor of changing this to a discussion item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Was that a no from Commissioner Gross?
That's correct.
Okay, so the motion passes. We're changing to a discussion item. I think we still need a vote on approving the amended agenda. So looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
The Mr. Chair. Oh, did we pass the amendment, right?
We changed.
And we already have a motion. I think we just need a, I would like to consider a reconsideration of Steve Williams and amend the agenda to have that.
The, I had read through the rules previously on motions to reconsider. There's two elements to that. One is that any motion for reconsideration is deemed, according to our rules, is deemed to be in order if it is made at the meeting following the vote that wants to be reconsidered. We are several meetings past that. The other requirement per our rules is that the person asking to move for reconsideration is to notify the county clerk. So I will ask the county clerk if there was notification on the motion to reconsider.
I had not had any notice of a motion to reconsider as the county clerk, correct?
Okay. The Commissioner Helsman, I'm going to rule your motion out of order because it does not comport with the rules that we have previously agreed on as county commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I would make a second amendment to the agenda and add a second discussion item for discussion of appointment of Mr. Williams to the here on Metro Parks Board.
Commissioner Zajak has moved to add a second discussion item to talk about the appointment of Mr. Williams to the Metro Park Board. Is there a second?
So move. Support.
Supported by, motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Helsman. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll just give rationale. I think I was going to do this as part of a report, but I think now is the opportune time. I appreciated the documentation that Mr. Williams put together, and I think like any civilized group of people, we won't always agree on the details or the specifics, but we will agree when there's process followed, that it's the right process. I think that further discussion and clarification of some points that were of key contention was appropriate. I appreciate that Mr. Williams put that forward. I also spent time speaking with Mr. Williams, and my concerns on two issues of not getting answered questions have been alleviated, which was the rationale for my no vote. No consideration of other candidates rather than just information that was presented by Mr. Williams. And so I think that further discussion is appropriate at this point. It's only a discussion item, and no action need be taken on a discussion item. But I think it's appropriate to have it here today.
Any other comments from commissioners? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nate.
One Nate. Motion passes, so we have another discussion item. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the two discussion items. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, point of order. We have a pending motion already, so I think we just need a vote.
The approval of the agenda was moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item number 10 on the agenda are reports from commissioners. Do we have any reports from commissioners this evening?
I have one.
Commissioner Reader.
I just wanted to share with board members and the public that I was able to attend the dedication for the new playground at Maple Beach last week. And that's located in Kensington Park. I must say it was a blistering afternoon. About 90. However, I would estimate maybe about 30 people were there. And that included adults and children. And all of them were there to attend the ceremony. And all of them were there to attend the ceremony. The children were mostly handicapped. Several were in wheelchairs. And the new playground I found to be a fantastic place. And anyone who goes to Kensington Park should take some time to visit, play, and observe for yourself what you think. Certainly is a place where any child with or without a disability can have fun and enjoy being outside with other kids. There's a concrete path sidewalk around the playground that accommodates wheelchairs and the playground itself is made of very thick rubber mat. So injuries are less likely to occur if anyone falls. The playground is located next to a sidewalk that leads up to the parking lot. And yet it's close enough to Count Lake so that the kids that are there can observe sunbathers, boating, and any other water activity. I remember how difficult it was for me when I was on crutches after knee surgery to go with my grandson to any near beach or playground. There just wasn't accommodation. I would highly recommend this type of playground be included with our county parks to allow all of our children to have a place where they can safely play in spite of their, any disability that they or their parents might have. I'm told that this is the only playground in our county or neighboring counties that allows for such accommodations. And I commend the Huron Metro Parks Agency for their innovative action in creating this wonderful place. We're very blessed to have this valuable asset at our disposal. I just wanted to say thank you.
Any other commissioners with reports this evening?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Zajak?
Thank you. I've addressed one of the items I intended to talk about in my report. That was a discussion with Mr. Williams. And I know we'll have a discussion item later, so I will save the remainder of that part of the report for that discussion item. But I'd like to address another project we've worked on very recently. And that is the project as it relates to rural broadband. As the public hopefully recalls, and I know many of our colleagues in the room recall because of the hard work over a short period of time that was put forward on this project. It was a project to grant approval from a federally funded program that was being advocated for by Congresswoman Slotkin's office for opportunities to have, among other things, funding for projects in communities in order to take advantage of available earmark funding. That, as was mentioned, I believe by somebody in the call to the public, was a $12 million cap project. We, through invitation of Congresswoman Slotkin's office, attended a meeting that was held 14 days before the deadline for submitting these projects for approval to her office. Commissioner, I'm sorry, CIO, Toby was on as well as Administrator Byrd at myself attended. I believe there might have been another commissioner in attendance, I don't recall, to this open meeting. And the, the outcome of that meeting was a decision to proceed. And there were several discussions in front of the public and the full board about this project. And it was really a Herculean effort to put forward a proposal in again 14-day timeframe that sought input from people all across the county, Democrats, Republicans, community members and in general, community leaders in terms of trustees and commissioners, as well as village presidents and the like. So it had unanimous support, I, I thought, and I thought it would be a successful project through the Congresswoman's office. Ultimately, it was not. There's been some reporting on this in terms of what the county has done to take action on rural broadband. And so to, to clear that up, I think it's important to address the work that was done in a very short period of time with really visionary support from our administration and our chief information officer. One of the key aspects of that proposal was that this was not some archaic system, but it was leading technology fiber optic, fiber optic cable. If Director Toby was here, he could get into all the nitty gritty details of that, but I, I do recall that he had handout samples of this fiber optic cable he passed around and he went through a very lengthy discussion about what this technology was, what the opportunity was. The $12 million, just to remind my colleagues, was to cover really a trunk network. I believe somebody mentioned that. I had the opportunity to affect over, and I'm citing from our grant proposal here, 85,000 residents would be positively impacted. And we had support, as I mentioned, from Cahock Township, Conway Township, Deerfield, Handi, Heartland, Howell, Iosco, Marion, Osceola, Putnam, Tyrone, Unadilla. There was going to be 150, nearly 150 miles of new fiber optic cable that would have been a part of this $12 million grant funding through the Agriculture Appropriations Community Project. So the county has been working on this and I, and I believe it remains a priority from, from my perspective anyways, that we address this issue. I also should mention the schools provided input. The only other thing that I'll say is as it relates to the $37 million, there's a lot of different departments that also have needs that impact our community. I've had discussions with our county clerk and, and I'm not gonna quote this as a fact, but I think that they interact in their office with quite a few people on a daily basis, perhaps more than any other department. The, I've spoken to the judicial system. I've spoken to the prosecutor, many members of the public to gain input on how these funds could be used. And we hear today, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Drain Commissioner John Keer with his input about potential opportunities. So I think that it's very important to recognize that we, we looked to take advantage of federal funds. We were denied that opportunity from our Congresswoman's office, but we've not stopped working. And I believe we will continue to work as it regards to broadband as well as the other needed improvements and opportunities with this federal funding. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other reports from commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Helserman?
Just have a few comments. Today's Flag Day. We're happy to be Americans and long that wave.
Thank you. Item number 11 on the agenda is approval of a consent agendas. We have resolutions 2021-06-082 through 2021-06-089. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Plank.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, supported by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion? Hearing none. Consent agenda requires a roll call. The Madam Clerk is shaking her head. Yes, so a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith is absent and Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're to item 12 on the agenda, resolutions for consideration. The first one, 2021-06-090. It's a resolution to accept the resignation of Kate Lawrence, County Commissioner for District 1. Is there a motion?
Nobody wants her to go.
Under protest, I move the resolution.
Protest, I second.
So we have two protesting commissioners. I, yes, I, I would be under protest to any. This is something that we have to do by law. So it's, we, we're, it's unfortunate that Commissioner, we don't have Commissioner Lawrence with us anymore, but you know, this resolution is a a statutory requirement. So any, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Gross?
I was deeply troubled with Commissioner Lawrence's resignation. I thought that she was a huge asset to this board. Many, many years of public service, including many years on this board. I would have loved to been able to have dialogue with her going forward on, on all of various issues, or many of them that are coming up. And, and I, I regret that I did not take advantage of the opportunity I had for the last year. We are gonna miss her. Yeah, I hate to see her go. And just as a small token of my esteem for her, I'm gonna vote no on this motion and this resolution. I, I do not accept her resignation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor or willing to accept, I'm not saying favor, how's that? All those willing to accept our legal obligations and accept Kate Lawrence's resignation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Gross votes no. Motion passes. Next up is 2021-06-091. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Area Agency on Aging 1B. Is there a motion?
So moved, Helserman.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Zajak. I want to lead the discussion on this one. I was informed that the bylaws of Area Agency on Aging 1B prohibit somebody from serving on their board plus serving on a, I'll call it the board of somebody they do business with, a supplier. Commissioner Helserman had early this year graciously accepted both assignments, you know, to serve as our appointee for the AAA 1B and also for OLSA. I informed Commissioner Helserman of the communication I got from AAA 1B. Asked Commissioner Helserman if, you know, he had a preference for one or the other. His, his longtime service to OLSA is why he chose OLSA. I thought that I was a little bit light on the outside assignments, the commissioner assignments, so I appointed myself to the board. But obviously that's up to the, the will of the majority here. So any other discussion on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm gonna save the discussion items for last. And so I'm going to, I'm gonna look at the clerk and see if she's frowning at me. No, not frowning at me. So we'll move on to the resolution 2021-06-093. It's a resolution approving commissioner assignments to committees for 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved, Helserman.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, supported by Commissioner Plank. I'll take the lead on this discussion. So as chair, I am vested with the responsibility of making the appointments for these commissioner, our committees. I, I, you know, with Commissioner Lawrence opting, you know, deciding to resign, I had to juggle assignments. So essentially, just for the verbal record, Commissioner Zajak has agreed to become the Finance Chair. I, Commissioner Gross has agreed to shift from the Public Safety Chair to the General Government Chair. And Commissioner Drick has accepted appointment to be the Public Safety Chair. Just to answer some questions for newer commissioners, you know, with the vacant, with the resignation of Commissioner Lawrence, there are, we're gonna run with, the Public Safety Committee will be, have three people until we fill that appointment. So, and that's how we did it with, when Commissioner Parker resigned, we ran between the two committees, the General Government and the Public Safety. The one committee had four and the other committee had three. So that'll get balanced out when we find a, when we appoint somebody to take over District 1. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. We have a discussion item on our, what was Resolution 2021-06-092. That's the resolution establishing uniform procedure for nominating and selecting citizens for board committee appointed position. I don't know if I need a motion for a discussion item. I don't think so. So I would ask commissioners if they have any comments or questions on this item. Commissioner Helserman?
I, I'd like to lead out on this. Commissioner, Chair Nakagiri and myself, early on, thought that this was important to do. My, first of all, I need to say thank you to all the, I think there's 230 people serving on these committees. The reason that we take this action is not because there is a problem with any committee or with anybody serving on the committee or even the process by which these people were appointed. But rather, it's, it's, the, this board wants the process to be more spilled, spilled, spelled out. And we don't want to spill out on it, but, and so that is, you know, that's kind of how this is going. And, and the first time you put something into words, because this is not into words, you have really hard time to explain what, how the process is going to go. And as I've said before, there, there are many different aspects to it, even what we did tonight. Appointing Commissioner Nakagiri to AAA 1B, that's one of the committees. And, and we, we give our chair the lead on picking those. And generally, we agree with what he, you know, what he does. And that's fitting. And to this point, the directors of these committees have basically been tasked with coming up with these names for the most, for the broad section of them. The thing that's the same about all of these is that we vote on it at the end. And so, you know, how do you get to that point? We all agree on the endpoint. But the, the problem comes, there's a first of a problem getting people to sign up. That's maybe the bigger problem. But the problem that we're trying to address is what if we have more than one person applying for, you know, if we have five or six, as in the, the planning commission, we had, I think, 15 or 20 people. The question is, how do you narrow it down? And what is equitable and transparent? And, and making that part controlled by, by the commission. But we don't want to, we want to keep our directors highly involved in the process because we, we have depended upon them in the past. And I hope that the process we set forward will reemphasize our trust in these directors and the thankfulness for the work that they've done. I just hope that this isn't pictured as the commissioners trying to pull away authority from other people who've had it and have done a good job at it. So that's kind of my, you know, starting out. One of the conundrums, I guess I call it, is how do you? if we bring three people in front of this commission, which we, we've done before, and, and this is what we'll be doing with the replacement for Commissioner Lawrence, we will probably have four or five people that are, that will come before us and we'll ask them questions. And the question is, how do we pick the one? You know, and it seemed to me that, that we should have a procedural vote that, that we decide on the order that we're going to consider them, so that we're not voting, you know, it's not the one who, with the fastest voice who gets their way, but we, we vote on the order that they're going to, going to be considered. And when we can agree on that order, then we take the vote one at a time. And it seems to me that that would, before we actually take a vote, we will have an idea of what the feeling of the committee is, what the feeling of the board is. And, and to me, if we adopt something like that, that's the biggest hurdle that we, that we have. How do we, how do we decide who, the order in which we're going to vote on people? So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Plank?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that by having a process in place, it gives new commissioners that come on this board sort of a guideline to follow and understand. Me, me being new, I had no idea what the process was. So I think by taking the time to make this the best process to follow is going to be not only good today or in a couple of weeks when we finalize it, but it's going to be good moving forward for years to come for all those new people that come on this board. So I also agree with a lot of what you said, Commissioner Helsnerman. And I just want to make sure that when, when we do finalize this, it, it sort of addresses all of these little nuances and stuff. You'll never capture everything. I know this from writing many of these in my current position, but you address the major points and the most important points. It helps to refer back to it when there is a dispute, when there is, you know, some misunderstandings, so that we can all go back to the same document, review it, and then address those issues at that time. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
If you recall earlier when we were discussing this, I, I voted no for the amendments, because I, I firmly believe we need to get a process in writing as quickly as possible. Last month, we, we voted to fill a position on the planning commission. And we heard that there were 20 some odd candidates that had been riddled down to five, and there was a recommendation to the board for one person. What was explained to the members of the board, including myself, that one person that, that we did appoint was very well qualified. But I did not see anything about the other four candidates. I, I don't even know their names. And, and I was distressed by that. And so over the last number of weeks, when we've had the situation regarding the appointment to the Metro Parks Board, once again, we had two names, but there were three other people out there. And, and there was another person who had expressed an interest to me that did not get their paperwork in. Unfortunately, it would have been, would have been too late anyway. But, so out of the other potential candidates, I knew one of them. And after, after some time, we were given resumes. And I was dismayed to find that we didn't have any written procedures on, on how to do this. And there's five of us here that are brand, relatively brand new. And it was explained to me, well, this is how we've done it in the past. And now Commissioner Lawrence is gone, and this evening Commissioner Griffith is ill. And so we've got two of you that have a certain level of experience in this. I, I feel we need to get something in writing as quickly as possible. I was very, very hopeful of having it tonight. And I'm just worried about kicking it down the road again. You know, if we want to do it at the next meeting, what's going to say that it doesn't happen then? We, we've got to bite the bullet and get it done. Thank you.
Commissioner Zajak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Gross, I share your dissatisfaction with the lack of written process. I've been astounded equally as my role on Personnel Committee and to find out, I've had to make appointments and it changes every time. So I share that with you, that same concern. And, and just to, I want to start with a little quote here. It's by John Schwartzwelder. You may not know him, but he's apparently a really famous comedy writer. And he says, "Since writing is very hard and rewriting is comparatively easy and rather fun, I always write my scripts all the way through as fast as I can the first day, putting all the bad jokes and dialogue. And then the next day, I get up and I start with a script that appears to be in written by a bad elf in my office." It's very, it's very unorganized. And basically, he's wearing a crappy hat while he drafts this script. All I have to do now is fix it. So I've taken the hard job writing and turned it into an easy one, rewriting overnight. And so he advises all writers to do the same. Unfortunately, I think I'm the crappy elf that drafted the first version of this two months ago, and it's since been rewritten quite well by Commissioner Reader. As it stands today, there are a few holes, I think, that exist that we would, we would not know how to handle, for instance, the posting process. You know, as it's written, my, my crappy elf version had a lot of detail, and, and the attempt to make it more succinct, there's a little bit of a gap with the specifics on how something would be handled. So we would leave administration somewhat in a lurch. Also, we've heard several comments since the first version, and, and through the second version that addresses the role of the directors, and perhaps also the, the situation where there are statutory boards or boards that perhaps aren't open for posting, but rather are, through the process, members of organizations that need to fill that, that specific position that wouldn't be open for posting. So there's a, a gap there as well. I, I think we're very close. You know, we're, we're in the final hours of the second day script writing, as I look at it. And I think that, in my opinion, there should not be an issue getting something by the next full board meeting that has gaps filled and addresses this spanning gap of lack of a written process so that it can be referred to, should the need arise, as we go through and address hard issues and, and tough appointments that are sure to come. So that was my rationale for seeking the, the discussion, and ultimately what ends in being, I suppose, a de facto tabling of the topic for tonight. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other comments? I, I just want to wrap up the discussion and just say, you know, my point of view on this, I'm a big advocate of having a process that's written for the reasons that Commissioner Plank had said, you know, especially for new commissioners. And I'm a new commissioner. I'm, I'm only, I'm only in my second term. It is especially important for new commissioners to have something in writing. So everybody's singing from the same song sheet, so I'm a, I, I want a process. I, I also want a process because, while I have great admiration, and I think that our county administrator does a great job, if he gets hit by a bus and we have a new county administrator that doesn't, that doesn't quite, is not quite as cooperative with the board, that is not quite as deferential to a board, I, I don't want to have arguments with a county administrator who's been raised to do things his way. I want a county administrator that, you know, is, is deferentialist. And if we happen to, you know, need a new one somewhere in the future, we, you know, we have, we have this policy to point to and say, this is how we're going to do our appointment. So with that being said, anything else on this as a discussion? All right. So we had another discussion item, but it, now my, my memory is failing. What was that? Oh, oh, the Metro Parks, Commissioner Zajak.
Yeah, I'm happy to start the discussion. I, I mentioned it in my vote or my discussion on the vote to make it a discussion item. I've had the opportunity since the vote, let me rewind, actually. We, we, as the board recalls, as the public recalls, we had a meeting at the end of May to consider this appointment. There were certain topics that certain commissioners had issue with, ranging from philosophical topics to procedural topics and all the same. My key points of concern, reason for my no vote, had to do with procedural issues. I, I, I came into the meeting undecided on how I wanted to proceed. Unfortunately, points back to the lack of a process. There would have been some clarity had we had some of these procedural processes in place we just discussed, that perhaps would have alleviated some of the issues that I had during the vote in terms of making a determination on how to proceed. That being said, there were two topics, the, the spending that was for an outside program that was partnering, as I understand now, with the Here on Metro Parks. And then also the specifics as it relates to the DEI funding or the DEI topic. And so after good discussion with Mr. Williams, as, as late as last evening, late into the evening, we, we had good discussion on those topics. I feel as though I've gotten answers to those topics, and I think that they are ones that are, are important to understand for, for my colleagues. The first one on the $6 million project is, as I understand, there is a, a back and forth partnership that exists with regards to outside organizations. And recently, we received some information from Mr. Williams about the reciprocity of that, of that partnership. And there's some grant funding that will be going to investigate a, a potential project that's being funded by an outside group. And then I presume that after an investigation, that would lead to some sort of project that would also be funded by the outside group. So having a better and more clear understanding of the relationship that exists was important to me on that spending question. Also, as it relates to the DEI topic, Mr. Williams, I heard him say today, also in his, in his comments, that he does not support the CRT aspects that, that may exist within the Metro Parks literature. I certainly would be interested in, in getting Mr. Williams' commitment to, to combat those positions, the things of, as we look at the language within the Metro Parks definitions about white privilege and, and the negative connotations that stream from that, looking at the ideological training that, that may exist, or, or the notion of finger pointing, as I've come to call it. I understand that Mr. Williams, through my discussion, does not share those beliefs. My understanding is that he has fought back against the finger pointing aspect. He's taken a position that education is important, which I think it is. I think we all need to be educated on diversity. We all need to be educated on unconscious bias. We all need to be educated on the purposes of, and the practices of inclusion, just like in a private employer, we're all educated on sexual harassment. But what we see in those trainings is not a, sexual harassment exists, you're a man, therefore you're a sexual predator. We never see that. We can't see that. So to the point where this DEI training crosses that line to say, education, therefore you being this group or you being that group, I, I would like Mr. Williams, he's here tonight, as we see, I would like his commitment to, to combat that as we go forward, whether it's specifically the language as it exists within the, the DEI, or the, I'm sorry, the Metro Parks DEI topic and training pamphlet, and then also commitment to, as these topics arise in the future, combat it equally as, as aggressively as we know there are strong components of that combat within our group as well as within our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other further discussion? Commissioner Plank?
I, I, I'm going to echo exactly what you just said. Just today, our company had a video that we had to watch. It was very cartoonish. I think I've seen it before. And I paid really close attention to the message my company was giving to all of us about what we need to grow, how we need to pay attention to our biases and everything. And I listened very closely to anything that said about white privilege, or one group pitting the other one against the, another. And, and there was none of that. And I'm, I'm from corporate America here. So, I mean, I was pleasantly surprised that they, they, they had the video to address these things, but never finger pointing, never saying one group is one way and another is another way. So I thought it was really well done. And so I don't know if we can ask Mr. Williams questions, or is this not the place to do that?
I, I would prefer to have the conversation between commissioners.
Okay. So while the, what I was going to ask is pretty much, Mitch, I know you spoke to Mr. Williams, but this program that I was watching was for employees of our company. We were not advocating to go out and train my family or kids in the neighborhood or people in the surrounding community about this program. Our, our focus was really on our employees to make us a great company, place to come to work, people feel comfortable coming there, and everybody's valued. So that was the message. And so my question, or I know I can't really ask this, but, you know, the program that you guys have in place at the metro, I was just curious whether or not, I know it says it's for employees, but it felt like it was going outside of that as well. And I, you know, I think training employees is great, as long as the message is more about, you know, treating everybody the way you want to be treated, right? That really, to me, is, you know, a message, you know, that we try to strive for. Treat me the way I would want to, you know, treat you, vice versa, and so on. However, if there's any of this program being like expanded to programs at the Metro Park were put together to bring the community and other people to be trained, I'm, I'm not for that. I, I think that I, I can teach my child to love everyone, and I don't need my company, I don't need the Metro Parks, I don't need the schools to do that for me, because I think I'm a good parent, and hopefully, my daughter has grown up to, you know, respect everyone, no matter what their background is. So that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Any other? Commissioner Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this topic first came up, I've, I've had multiple thoughts about it all. And, and I guess, one of the questions that I have is that, I lived in this area now for 20 years, and I cannot recall having ever heard that somebody called a Detroit television station or radio station or WHMI or the local newspaper and said, "We were out at Kensington and we were discriminated against." I've never heard that. And the only thing that I've ever remotely heard is that, from some friends, is that they have some friends who are African American. And those African American folks indicated to my friends that they were afraid to come out to Livingston County to go shopping. And apparently, that was an outgrowth of our history. Because I, I have, I don't know if I'm living in a cave. I've never heard of, of anything in the last 20 years that would cause people to feel that way. My wife and I go out to Kensington quite frequently. It's been over a year, unfortunately, but I, I've seen Arab Americans out there. I've seen African American folks out there. Several times a year, we see the Amish community using the park. And, and I've never seen an incident of discrimination, poor treatment. People I've seen out there have enjoyed the park, and I've been very happy about that. I live right across the street from Here on Meadows, and I see multiple people utilizing that Metro Park. So I'm, I'm wondering, where does the idea that the Metro Parks need to train their employees in the subject of DEI, what, what's driving that? Is, is there a record of complaints? Is there a, a history of, of people being abused? We've never heard anything along that lines. We've never heard anything along that lines. So uh, training their employees, particularly for the employees in the here on Me- here on Meadows Park, our park. It's the only park that we have in Livingston County. I've heard reference that um, Kensington is a Livingston County park. That's not true. Ninety percent of that park is in Oakland County. We have the entrance in the park headquarters building in Livingston County, and that's it. Everything else is in Oakland County, so we really only have one. And um, I'm not aware of any, any problems. You know, what, what might transparian, trans uh, appear to trans, be present in all of the other Metro Parks. I, I don't see that as our concern in Livingston County. We have a Metro Park, uh, it's different from all the rest, uh, the demographics are different. Um, I find it hard to accept um, actions taken by the Metro Park Board applying to the one park in our county. It, it doesn't make sense to me. Just, just my thoughts on that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Helserman.
Um, the uh, this is talking about uh, the, the Metro Parks. Uh, I, I think that um, uh, first of, first of all, I think from all the discussion that I've heard that we are satisfied that uh, Mr. Williams will remain in his position until replaced. That's uh, you know, that's my understanding. Uh, I would secondly say that um, uh, that uh, we should get our process in place. We need to start with a fresh slate. I, I would suggest that we, you know, whatever happened before, cause you know, there's only two, from my understanding, there's only two people that were on time that would fit the bill. You know, there, there are many that, that uh, anyways, with, with Steve being one of them. Uh, uh, and so I think that uh, uh, this appointment will be maybe the, the flagship or the first ship out of, out of the port using our new system. Uh, so that we can see how it works and see, you know, see how it works, which uh, I think that uh, uh, and, and I won't bela- belabor my, my support for Steve, but uh, uh, I uh, you know, I, I I'm happy, you know, the before all the started, and the reason for my support was I had had quite a few, I'd say, long discussions, maybe a couple hour discussions about this with Steve. Uh, so I knew how he was thinking, and I knew uh, though the votes maybe looked a certain way, that he would act almost the same way that any of us around this table or anybody who has a conservative bent and is concerned about uh, about uh, uh, you know, the new terms that are coming into play in our society that nobody understands. But the people that are pushing them understand that, and they have an agenda. Uh, and it takes us all by surprise, but you know, I, that, that's what I think. I think whatever we've done to this point, we need to say this is over. You know, cause uh, uh, I think we're not, even if we could have reconsidered tonight, uh, I think the, the vote might have still been the same as it was before. Uh, so I, I think, my idea is that we, you know, whatever process we, we have had, it is done. And when we get our process in place, we use that process for filling this uh, particular place. That's, that's kind of how I'm uh, thinking about this, you know, I've, and you know, I've been solid my support for Steve all the way through. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll, I'll chime in um, at the end of the de- debate and discussion here and say, um, you know, I am um, troubled by the uh, what I read on the website of the Metro Parks with respect to its uh, DEI program. There are elements of that DEI program that are um, actually um, in my view, I would call them critical race theory elements. Uh, specifically, um, the Metro Parks has a definition uh, out there for all to see how they define white privilege. Um, that means there is white privilege, I mean, you have a, it's, the definition is, is printed out there by Metro Parks. They also have a definition for institutional racism. So that, that means that um, Metro Parks believes there is institutional racism. And I, and, and in my interpretation of that, that's, you know, the, all of American society is racist. That's my interpretation of institutional racism. They also have a definition for implicit bias. And um, these things uh, that I just mentioned, white privilege, institutional racism, implicit bias, are part and parcel, part of critical race theory. Now, does that mean that the entire program that um, um, is presented to um, or, or, or conducted at um, the Metro Parks uh, is just those three items? I, I, I would venture a guess and say, no, there's other elements. But those three elements in the, in itself are troubling, very troubling to me. Um, they fit into the category, th- those elements of what I'm going to call and what um, President Trump referred to in an executive order as racial stereotyping and racial scapegoating. And um, I did some more research into this whole topic this weekend and saw that in September of 2020, um, that President Trump had issued an executive order to prevent this racial scapegoating and racial stereotyping training of federal employees and federal contractors in this, what I'm gonna say is garbage. And um, unfortunately, that um, that executive order was um, rescinded or, or undone by President Biden. Um, but I would say this, had that um, executive order applied, and it didn't, uh, because it, it didn't apply to, um, it only applied to federal employees and federal contractor. Had it applied to um, had that executive order applied to Metro Parks, they would have been in violation of that exec- executive order uh, preventing these, that this training. I will also say in, in, in close that um, I received, um, two things uh, before I close. I received an email from an employee of Metro Parks. Um, and I, um, one of the things that was stated in that um, email was something along the lines of, "I am insulted to be um, uh, told that, you know, I'm racist" or "the, all the world's racial problems are due to me and my family and my ancestors." I, I, that just appalls me, um, shocks me greatly, cause I, I, and it, it is not my belief system. And um, I, I think I've made that point clear. The last point I want to talk about before um, yielding the floor is um, there was a letter uh, that I'm looking at right now that was, well, it was in the minutes of the Metro Parks. Um, uh, and, and their meeting minutes from Thursday, September tenth, 2020 at 1:00 PM. It was uh, a statement um, from uh, Amy McMillan, Director of H's uh, Metro Parks. And the statement started out by saying, quote, "Since issuing our statement in support of social jus- justice following the death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and many others," I'm gonna say blah, blah, blah. So this is a uh, in the minutes, it's, it's a discussion about the support of social justice. And if you took the time to read this um, this um, statement, it, it, it is clear that um, the director was looking for the board to do more um, than what they're doing in support of social justice. And um, part of that, uh, doing more for social justice was, and I'm, I'm reading and quoting from the minutes here. "And in October, which is the next month, um, we will bring forward a proposed pilot five-year partnership agreement with the Detroit Riverfront Conservancy to the board for its approval." So bringing that forward in the context of doing, this was brought forward in the context of doing more for social justice. Um, lastly, the um, i- i- in this same statement, it says, "As part of this program, we would also seek to make the speakers," and there, these are um, DEI speakers, "available for interactive discussions with staff as well as presentation, open to the public with a particular emphasis on school-aged children where possible." That, that is, I, I, that just makes my blood boil. That's the last thing I want to say, that's the last thing I'd like you to remember. Um, the focus on emphasis on school-aged children where possible. With that, I yield the floor and, and ask my commissioner colleagues if anybody else has a follow-up comment. Hearing none, I'll close out this discussion item um, and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Helserman?
Oh.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I know you're there to keep me straight there. So um, so yes, um, my apologies, um, uh, we have a second call to the public. Um, same rules as the first call to the public, um, you know, please give your name and address. Um, you have three minutes, um, and uh, we'll start with the meeting room here, and then I'll ask that Cindy Katnick kind of manage the Zoom, the Zoom meeting room.
Well, shoot, I can't find, okay.
Is there anybody in the room here who would like to address the board?
Hi, Chuck Wright, five five seven five, Stowe, Fallerville. Um, if I was interviewing an employee for a job and they came to me and said, uh, "If you don't hire me, I'm gonna take legal action", I'd probably reconsider that person applying.
Mr. Williams, are you?
Steve Williams, five one one eight, and she wrote, how old is she again? Answer your question really quickly, um, no, it is not. Ironically, we have it, we had those speakers open to the public so people would have visibility. And the next speaker actually comes from Michigan State University, so no, it is not being promoted out to the, out to the general public. It is available if anybody wants to dial in. Actually, the training that people go through, it's a couple hours a year, a couple hours a year. Supervisors go through more than regular employees, and then there's voluntary afterwards, but only totally voluntary. And there's been a lot of participation in that, but employees don't have to do that. And where Commissioner Gross is concerned, I know you're a newcomer to the county, but the only reason we're in the Metro Park system is because of Kensington. Hudson Mills or here on Meadows only opened up in the nineties, so it is one of our parks, it is the busiest park. And yes, we have had complaints in other parks, because we have thirteen parks with four and a half million people. So if you want to contact me, or if you would have contacted me before, I would have been happy to give that to you. I am happy to have heard people mention that today's Flag Day. Flag Day is also the same as the Army Birthday, because there would be no American flag without the American Army, okay? And your chair put out a memo stating that a candidate was uh, using the veteran card to apply for a position. And we all know that that's coded language for somebody getting something for free, meaning, oh, because of your race, your gender, your disability. I did not get my veteran status for free, the veteran status was earned. Any of those benefits, any veteran preference, which is in Michigan and federal law, is earned. That doesn't mean that you get to ignore the law because you don't like me. That means you still need to follow the law. That doesn't mean that it was a gift, it is not a card, it is earned, the same as my, any other veterans' benefits are earned, the same as my disability status is earned, the same as all my medals were earned. This is not a veteran card, this is a request to follow the law, which you obligated yourselves to when you took your oath of office.
Thank you. Um, Cindy Katnick, if you would um, see if there's uh, anybody on Zoom that wishes to address the board.
Judy Dobbin-Meyer? Yes, my name is Judy Dobbin-Meyer, and I live at four four nine zero Lake Shore Court, Brighton, Michigan, in Genoa Township. And uh, I wanted to point out that um, the so-called grant that was submitted to Representative Slotkin's office was not a grant request, but an earmark request. Uh, the same sort of procedure that Republicans threw out in 2010 when the Tea Party took over. So I find it a little ironic that Republicans now are so anxious to take part in the earmark process. Uh, earmarks were intended for uh, uh, items for which there was no other source of funding. And there was other sources of funding for the broadband program. And I'm sorry that you had to throw it together in two weeks, because a year ago, Democratic candidates for county commission called on the commission to set up a committee to study broadband, because we were in the midst of a pandemic, and it was obvious to anybody who listened to the public that people needed better broadband access in order to function for school, for work, for shopping, for medicine, and so on in the middle of the pandemic, yet the commission chose to do nothing. And so when a funding opportunity arose that actually didn't fit this situation, you had to throw something together in two weeks. If you'd been on the ball, you'd have been ready. So I hope you don't do the same thing this time around and miss this opportunity. Regarding the appo- appointment policy, I hope that you remember to uh, make us exceptions for statutory uh, appointments such as Board of Canvassers, because uh, I don't think that uh, those sorts of appointments are appropriate for the procedure that you are outlining. And there was a reference made to people uh, not wanting to apply, not being enough applicants. Well, a decision has been made that uh, you know, no Democrats can be appointed. If, if you would consider broadening your pool of people who you were appoint, there might be more people who would be willing to serve and do the work, uh, the work of the county, the work of the public, the work of the taxpayers that needs to be done, uh, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbin-Meyer.
Mark Heims?
Hello, uh, good evening, uh, Commissioners, um, address is uh, three ten East Washington Street, Howell. Uh, and I just wanted to uh, thank you on behalf of the Transportation Coalition and myself and Les for uh, passing both resolutions uh, oh six eight eight and oh six eight nine. Um, and uh, your uh, continued uh, commitment to um, continue the expansion of our transportation services in our county. So I appreciate you, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yes, Kathleen Klein-Hudson, seventeen nineteen Town Commons Drive, Howell. Um, I wanted to speak a little bit about the appointment policy. Um, as the county planning director, I have been distressed that I've heard the planning commission nomination and interview process mentioned over and over again as a bad example. Uh, it's been at a handful of meetings, and yet we worked very hard to accommodate both uh, Commissioners Helserman and Commissioner Nakagiri in our process this past time. And I have not had a single, um, well, I should say, I've had one Commissioner who has even asked me about the process. So I, I take exception to that, and I've been quiet thus far, but it's really bothered me. And I just want to say regarding the appointment process, that one of the things that has been kind of um, uh, dismissed in the planning commission process was how myself and my staff, um, how we um, came to the, how we narrowed down the number of nominees. And I do not see that this policy addresses that or how we are supposed to interview. Um, I find it very confusing and that it might be uh, more understandable if you were to divide it between the two types of groups that you're addressing. Uh, the one that is under state statute, separate rules, resolution, and the committees that are not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss, um, thank you, Kathleen.
Karen's iPad?
Karen's iPad?
Hello, my name is Karen Pierce. I live at 2299 Sausna Drive in Pinkney, Michigan. It's in Harp, excuse me, in Hamburg Township. First, I'd like to say that I regret the resignation of Kate Lawrence from the Board of Commissioners. In my many meetings and calls to the public at the Board of Commissioners meetings, Kate Lawrence was always welcoming and open-minded. And while I'm sure we often disagreed, she was always attentive. And I will miss her presence on the board. And I was happy to hear the regret expressed by the Commissioners who remain on the Board of Commissioners. I was happy to see that there were some discussion items tonight and am hopeful that your application process that you are working on will be something that will be far more effective than what has evidently been used in the past, which doesn't seem to be much of a process. I hope this will lead to a more equitable way of replacing Commissioner Lawrence by the Board of Commissioners and also reappointing or appointing a new Livingston County liaison to the Huron Clinton Authority, Board Authority. Steve Williams has been in that position for a very long time, and I'm happy to hear that he has the support of at least some of the Commissioners. And I'm hopeful that he can be reinstated. This whole confusion about the diversity and equity and inclusivity has become so focused with this Board of Commissioners on this race and this critical race theory when it is really very much broader than just a black versus white kind of thing. For instance, the wonderful new playground that was opened at Maple Beach at Kensington is part of this diversity, equity, and inclusion, to include children and families who have limited access to playgrounds and play spaces in our communities. So I'm really urging the board to be more open-minded. There are so many organizations, including the Livingston County United Way, who had a...
Ms. Pierce, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did I unmute? This is, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. This is Mike Miller from Conway Township, 7575 Morley Road. And I was glad to hear the Commissioner's little rant about the critical race theory and his opinion of it. And I'm so glad that he let everyone know how he feels. I'm sure that everyone in the county is very happy with him. But there are Democrats out there, including probably the gentleman that should be reappointed, that deserve consideration without your small-minded impressions of who should be and who shouldn't be educating the public. I don't think that you should be in charge of educating the public any more than the gentleman at the Park Commission. And it's up to the parents. I've educated my children. And I'm sure that they can pull out what is correct and what isn't correct. And we know there's an awful lot of American history that is not being taught. And Wes, if you just open your mind and try to educate yourself a little bit, I think it'll benefit the board and the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? If you like to just hit the reaction button, I can take a look.
Cindy, actually, we have somebody here in the meeting room that would like to speak. So we'll do...
Understood. Thank you.
William Boland, 1615 South Old U.S. 23, senior pastor of a local church. I was hesitant to speak as there are so many issues and so many heartstrings that are plucked when it comes to critical race theory, racial equity, and things of this nature. I grew up in the ghetto, came out of the ghetto through education, aspired to become something different than what my surroundings had dictated that I would be. I would be rather, it would be rather difficult for me to even determine what to do in terms of racial inequity. My great-grandfather was a slave, black man here in America. By my complexion, you would not know that. For whatever reason, when my father and my uncle were born, their genes split. My uncle was dark with nappy hair. My father is as white as I am, or pink, I should say. Let's be a little more correct. At summertime, the sun is shining. Do I get reparation? Or am I a racist who is oppressing people whose blood I carry? My grandfather grew up on a reservation on the other side of my family, American Indian. Am I a oppressor? Am I a racist? Or am I a victim? I say neither. Critical race theory is a complex piece of garbage that needs to be shredded and excised out of every community in America. It creates a system of oppression. It creates a victim mentality that will always, always proceed to put those who are considered to be victims in a position of attaining and acquiring that which they have not earned. It will always put people who are considered to be the majority in the position of having racist views, regardless of how they have acted and how they have behaved. In addressing the issue of black oppression, the problem of slavery was absolutely a difficult one in our country, absolutely. In the process, though, of freeing the slaves, it was Caucasians who fought on behalf of freeing the slaves. This has not always been a racist nation with racist thought. We are aspiring to create a more perfect unit. When we don't get it right, we go back to the drawing board and we create boundaries and systems that allow people to achieve. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for joining us. Anybody else in the room? Cindy, anybody else in Zoom?
Yes, Janet Jasnik?
Hi, thank you. My reactions didn't have a raised hand, so thanks for noticing. I'm Janet Jasnik. I live in downtown Brighton, 404 Franklin Street. And I do, I agree with Karen that the board needs to be a lot more open-minded. And of course, discussions about racism, sexism with institutions, I've lived it too. And institutions are racist. They are sexist too. I've been in engineering, higher education, public and private education. And I faced it and I've seen it, and I think we all have too. So we can't just pretend that it's not there. But, and I also think, you know, let's give students information. I was a teacher for many years. And, you know, the worst thing you can do is hide something because the kids are going to find out anyway. And so you might as well give them all the facts and let them make their own decisions. And I can give you a little example about, I used to teach sociology and talking about bias. My students would go visit a park and they would borrow one of their younger siblings. And a couple of students would pretend that they were a younger family of, say, 16-year-old and 17-year-old parents. And boy, did they see the kind of bias right at the playground then. Another group of students dressed in goth and went to a Lord &amp; Taylor store. And they were followed around by security. Again, there's bias. It's there. We all know it. And I think that just making our decisions based on the fact that it's not there or that anyone is trying to be critical and condemn people, it's, let's get past it. Let's try and create a world where there isn't any bias. And finally, too, I would also urge the board to work on getting us using the $37 million for some more broadband and help people out that way in our community. We really need it. So thank you.
Is there anybody else out there, Cindy?
I do not see anybody else. Let me just run through this real quick. Commissioner Nakagiri, I do not see any other hands.
All right. So I'll close the call to the public and thank everybody for having a respectful discussion on tough issues that are, that we have to deal with. I am all, I'm impressed with it. We have a community that can talk about tough issues in a respectful manner. So thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Helserman.
Support Zajak by Helserman, support by Zajak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We're adjourned.